I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Meetings from the June meeting can be approved. Minutes on that.
A second.
What?
I need to watch some telegraphing.
Home favorite. Bills for July to be approved and paid. I haven't even looked at them yet. Next is?
That's the engineer. The engineer.
What was that bill for? At three thousand.
And what that is, is the seepage rate test before, you know, we talked about it in January February when it was, but I'd never really prepared and submitted the report. So it was just the final invoice on that three for the contract for the seepage rate test from last year.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the bills?
A motion to pay the bills.
Swing it. All three, Earl and every.
All three.
Okay, Kathy Nelson?
Yes. My daughter will represent me if you don't mind.
Okay. You're on.
Hey, where would you like me to stand so that I can best address you?
Well, as close up here as you.
Okay. How about if I just keep this way? How about I go like this? Hey, I apologize, I only have five copies of this, I had no idea how many people would be here at the meeting, so um.
Oh, you just need to.
If you guys.
For the council.
What's that?
You just need to.
Just for the council, okay, well, there's that, if you guys, I didn't know if you'd want to look at it while I was talking with you or not, but. So I am here to talk with you, um, behalf of my mom, I'm Lori Schneider, by the way. Um, I am here to talk with my mom in, oh my goodness. On behalf of my mommy Catherine Nelson. She currently resides at six ninety-seven north, is that right, six ninety-seven north, seven hundred east, is that right?
But it said no. Six ninety-seven.
I know, that's what I put on there, but that's not right, I put in some wrong numbers there.
I put. I have to write it eight, eight thirty-five north, six ninety.
Okay, that's because that's what it says.
Huh?
Okay, six ninety-seven east, eight thirty-five north, I so apologize, I put that, I just know how to drive there. And she has a post office box, I've never had to use the physical address, I apologize, but it is, um, eight thirty-five north, I'm so sorry about that. Um, the reason that we're here tonight is because we'd like to petition for an exemption of the half acre minimum building lot requirement. Um, I have included a copy of a quick landing that does include her legal address or legal description, just in case someone might need that. Um, Kathy has lived here for, she, they got married, she married my stepdad Mike in nineteen eighty, so forty-two years that she has been living in that same home, um, on that little corner there in that little trailer. She still resides there and my brother Michael lives with her in that location. She owns property, and if you wouldn't mind maybe referring to the drawing, which is the back page of this. So this is Oregon Road here, and that's, this is the eight hundred, eight seven, eight, oh my goodness. Okay. Heading north on Oregon Road. She said this corner at eight thirty-five north, right?
Yeah, north and east.
Okay. Um, the lots that I am referring to, this is the lot where my mom's trailer currently is existing, and then there's a canal that cuts through the property this way, and then she also owns the parcel of land on the other side of the canal. Um, neither one of these two lots actually meet the minimum building requirement. Where mom's house currently is sitting, it's zero point three one four acre, and the lot west of the canal is zero point four thirty-nine acre, so just under that half acre minimum. I just jotted down some points that I would like for you guys to consider in making a determination on this if it can be made.
So before you go that too far.
Yes.
So what you're wanting, so you've got a third of an acre essentially on one side of the canal, and then just.
And just under a half acre on the other side.
So on the other side of the canal, you're wanting to put a home in.
I will get there.
Here's the problem, so I don't want you to get too far.
No, okay.
So if you're asking for a variance from a half acre building thing, there's a process we have to go through so it notifies your neighbors and stuff, which then these guys are the fact finders to make that decision.
Okay.
So we don't want to do too much without the opportunity for the neighbors to be here, or otherwise excuse the facts, and then it's not meeting proper hearing. See what I'm saying?
Okay.
So.
I don't know what's too much to share.
Essentially anything, I mean, the points that you were going to get into for why, and they may be entirely valid, but your neighbors, if they oppose it, need to be able to hear that. So then they can address it, see what I'm saying, so think of it as kind of a mini trial, right, each side makes their arguments and says, here's why they want to do it. Well, in fairness, you don't get to go twice, you know, and prep, everybody can hear the same presentation. So I just wanted to make sure if that's where you're headed, we want to do it right.
Okay.
Because I don't think your neighbors probably will complain at all, um, and so we don't want to screw that up. So that's why I wanted to make sure I kind of understood where you're headed.
So what you're saying is they have to be presented with the opportunity to attend a town meeting.
Exactly.
And either oppose or.
Or be in favor of it, right. And so normally what you do is you have a notice that goes out to three hundred feet to the neighbors, and they have to notify everybody within three hundred feet, and then there's a publication that goes in the paper, and then you have a public hearing. At the public hearing is where you would give all your points as to why a variance would be a good idea.
Okay.
For that lot split. And then your neighbors get to be here to either oppose it or, you know, be in favor of it. But then council has a fair opportunity to hear both sides all at the same time.
Okay.
So my only fear is, like I said, I don't mean to catch ya off.
No, we're fine, I just, I have no idea what to prepare for tonight.
Yeah, and if one of your neighbors was adequately opposed to it, and they found out you've been here already, and kind of got council thinking one way or the other, they could challenge it and you'd be dead in the water.
Okay.
So out of fairness, we want to do it the right way.
So should I take this back?
Yes.
I guess just the only thing then that I will add maybe is that we are actually asking for the is that.
And your neighbors.
Um, Cal Robinson is the one to the north of this property.
Okay.
Grebsteads are east.
Grebsteads are to the.
Or north, I'm sorry, north.
Cal is.
Cal is to the west. The property to the south of her, I don't know who owns it on the other side of the canal next to Cal.
I don't know who it is.
And then the property right next to her home is a rental home. And then on the other side of the street from your house, I don't know them, so I don't know who it is.
Is it? Is it Russell or Jensen, one of these on the side of Oregon Road?
Three hundred feet? No, not Oregon Road.
Russells are too far away.
No, it's on the other side of eight thirty-five north.
Oh, well, that's, isn't that Tracy's?
Tracy's mom.
Tracy's mom and dad.
Okay. I don't know them, so I'm sorry.
And then Stan, Cal Robinson, and then rental. I don't know who is this next Cal.
Cal, because that, that kind of runs along the backside of the property she has across the canal.
Is that? Is that where the. I think Williams, I think the old, I think he's gone, and somebody else is living.
He was moved and where's he and died with.
Yeah, he died. Born and died.
I don't know, last I heard was.
That's all here's.
Perhaps one of his sons lived there.
Nobody lives there.
Oh, nobody lives there?
No, but it boys. Taking care of it as far as I know.
The only other thing then that I guess I would like to mention is that we are actually asking for, these, she actually owns two parcels of land. The one on the west side of the canal where her house is, and then the empty lot on the, excuse me, her house is on the east side of the canal. I need to turn a different direction. Um, her house is on the east side of the canal, and then the empty lot that's just under a half acre is on the west side of the canal. Um, we are actually asking for a variance if needed on both of those lots.
Because one of them has an existing home.
Right. But we want to replace that one, okay? So in the next couple of years, we want to replace the rundown trailer that she's living in right now, but we would also like to be able to sell the land on the other side and give whoever purchases the land the opportunity to, if they desire to do that.
And you're gonna.
My state's there.
Are you gonna replace that trailer?
That's her intention, yes.
Within the next three years, yeah.
The what?
Within the next three years.
Michael, who is living with, my brother Michael, who lives with my mom currently, is embarking on a new career path right now. He is really, really close, he has one more test to get, to get his teaching certificate, and then he'll need that year on the job in order to be able to qualify for a mortgage so that they can afford to put another home in there.
So will that be a double wide?
Um, now, that's the point what I was gonna ask, is in order to replace my old home, does it have to be a double wide?
Are you, now you said your old home, are you talking about a trailer? Or are you talking about a whole home?
No, it's a single wide trailer.
Yeah, you, the only way you can replace, you can't replace a single wide.
Okay.
It's gotta be a double wide on a foundation.
Okay. Okay, that we didn't, we weren't clear on that, so we wanted to clarify that.
Well, if it's still replacing something that would be there, I would think it would have to be. So the next step is to.
See, that's the question we weren't sure of there, is if there would be some kind of a grandfather for the property where her own, for the parcel where her home already exists, and if that's the case, then we only need the variance, we would only petition for the variance on the other parcel that is just under the half acre.
You can answer that question.
Well, so without getting into dates and stuff, because I don't know, but I think you just, I think you propose both for now, because then your neighbors know exactly what's going on. So that's not trying to hide the ball already.
Okay.
But so next steps, if you'll get with Tressa, um, when she's at the office or something, and get the information to her, I can help with the notices together. And then the second piece would be, so if you'll do that and get that done, but then the second piece, go and explain to your neighbors what's going on, so when they get this letter, because in my experience, ninety percent of the problems are where they don't quite understand.
I have to go around personally and.
That's what you.
You don't have to.
We'll talk about this more.
You don't have to, but what I'm saying is if you just gotta say, hey, this is what's going on, and you're gonna get a letter in the mail, you get rid of the fear.
Got it.
You know, people get these notices, they're like, what the hell's going on?
Well, my only thought, my only thought is that that vacant property, how do we get in contact with it?
And if we can't, you can't, but like I said, the more, the more damage control you can do by explaining what's going on, the better.
Bingham County Tax Assessor has an online program, you can go in, just.
I'll help you with that.
And it'll.
Because that's where.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Oh, okay.
And you don't have to come up with that, I'll take care of that for you.
Okay.
So give it to Tressa and give the addresses and the different information, and then she can get it to me and we get it all put together. Because you have to have it out fifteen days before the next city council meeting.
So we need to get it.
Yeah, so yeah, within the next week or two, we need to be getting that done.
All right, so would we come back?
Stress over there.
Would somebody put my name on it?
Yeah, so we'll have it on the agenda, and we'll have it listed in the public hearing.
Yeah, true, that's a good job.
Yeah, because I'll forget.
I will.
Yeah, like I said, if you can kind of explain what's going on, the notices out, then it should be well, but then it's a fair hearing, and anyone can worry about it.
Okay. When might I be able to catch you?
I'm here Tuesday, Thursday.
Okay.
I'm calling in the morning, but I can give you my cell phone number.
Okay. Okay. Do you want me to just?
Sorry about that.
It's okay, I had no idea what I needed to do for tonight, so I'm glad you stopped me before we went too far.
Yeah.
Aren't you Lori? Oh, okay. I thought you'd stand.
She's sitting over your.
Nicest thing I've heard all day.
Well, you got her food, don't you?
So is there anything further you need from me this evening?
Nope, if you'll just.
In this regard, okay, all right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Just considering you're dry.
His name, address is a very good one, and then we can double check on the GIS map when we get all that done.
Okay. Well. I guess you're a bigs.
Well, I got a call from the mayor, sure four weeks ago, and I think it was kind of a little kicking the bee behind to get going.
Yeah.
So we did, so went ahead and finalized the report from last season, you know, from the, and we talked all about it, how Lagoon One had failed and Lagoon Two had passed. So I sent, went in, prepared the report, submitted it to DEQ, they reviewed the report, we had lots of more little phone calls about it, and Tressa Nicholas over in Boise, you know, because we had all those conversations earlier, and I'd sent her all the data. They went ahead and approved, just like they, you know, just like we talked, and they said, and there's a letter, and I think this letter actually came to you, the mayor, but it's in the front of the report too, that says, you know, basically that here at the back there for you, satisfactorily met the seepage testing requirements, or cell two, cell one will be need to be, need to be retested at your earliest convenience. So that, that's the record in the document, I didn't get these bound, I can leave them, I prefer to find them and bring them back, you know, I mean, I think I sent it to the, to the, the address, like, so you have electronic copy, but, um, you know, it's nice to have a hard copy too. So then, on the retest, I said, well, as long as I'm, as long as I'm in this, then we had to basically take the seepage rate test plan, and it was, there here says, retest plan. So this is the, this is the procedure to retest cell one for this season. And we, they sent a letter, this one was actually sent to me instead of the city, so, and they have some conditions here. They approved the plan, so we can go ahead and do the testing now, they have to approve the plan before you do it. And they said, the conditions they said are, no work may begin until a copy is approved, letter, a seepage testing procedure bearing the DEQ approval stamp, or delivered to and kept on the job. So we have to, you have to keep a copy of this, I, so, you know, I can leave it, but again, I'd rather get it bound before you, before I do it, come apart and otherwise. So, and no deviations, so the name says, no deviations can be made from this procedure unless we get prior written approval from DEQ. This is, and then the thing that we need to work with you on is, it says, groundwater above the bottom of the lagoon creates uncertainty in testing for seepage. In order to conduct a valid seepage test that evaluates integrity of the lagoon and ability to retain wastewater, the seepage tests must be conducted at a time when the groundwater level is below the bottom of the lagoon. And I don't think we have any monitoring wells out there. So, do you have a way to?
House wells all around it.
What's that?
Heck, house, house wells all around it.
Could we, do we have anything we can tell what the groundwater level is right there?
Well, could it be done, you know?
Yeah, I don't know if we need to dig a hole, or dig a hole and stick this piece of pipe in it.
It's about, uh.
I think we're gonna have, I think what we're gonna have to do is actually measure the groundwater level when we do it.
It's about fifty-three feet right now.
Right there, there's not a, there's not a upper.
No, there's no upper one right there.
Right.
There's no first one in that area.
Okay, like if you dig post holes, you don't hit water.
Now, the closest groundwater right there is about fifty-three, fifty-two feet, it's sixty, sixty-one feet right on the, our well that we just replaced on top of the hill.
Right.
And that's.
Right. Maybe something worth thinking about, because it'd be nice to have something that we can, when we're recording all the other stuff, we can record, okay, I measured the groundwater and this is what it is. Kind of not very convenient to measure.
I know several of the people out there, and I can get them, they should kind of check every one of the wells that they want.
And we, long as we have one of them, I think we're good in this, we're reasonably close enough.
We can check, we can check the closest one.
And then since it's approved, I think it's just coordinating with guy and getting set up like we did last year, and if you sell one, still have the inflatable plugs, right? We just have, on those inflatable plugs, we just have to check that pressure every day, and I'll download the data more, more regular, so we know, oh, well, we better mess with the plugs because we're leaking, or whatever. Well, if you remember what happened is the, the, our, our water surface elevation actually came up during the test instead of down like you would expect, so more than likely, the inflatable plug was, was, you know, leaking into the lagoon, so we just gotta make sure that we get that sealed good. And I think, I'm pretty sure in the one, the one test, it kind of, um, the pressure dropped in it, and I don't know why, but, anyway. I didn't check it, so I can't. You know, if you, and if you imagine you got that pipe that was from, that splitter box in the front that splits water from one lagoon to the other, and then in between the two, there's a transfer structure, same thing, there's a pipe that connects the two. You have to put a plug in each, in each one of those so that lagoons are isolated, and, and then when you do that, and you imagine that if there's anything, there's a little rock or some sand in the bottom of the pipe, then you put the plug in, well, it's, it's hard to seal around something if there's something in the pipe, so. Which has to make, takes a little more precaution when we put the plugs in this year, make sure we get it.
What's DEQ gonna say about, I mean, because it's, that pond's evaporating every day like crazy.
Yep. How full is it?
It's down about two and a half feet, about two feet.
Can we, can we drag all the water for a little while into the pond one and?
Yeah, either one.
Yeah, we have to test pond one, so let's fill pond one as high as we can, and, you know, put all the water in it instead of split between the two. And it may still be evaporating faster than we can, you know.
Right now, it's wet.
So if that's the case, and we're supposed to have a full when we test it. You know, last year we tested in September, so we didn't have a lot of evaporation, and, but they were reasonably full then too.
Yeah, they were a little full in there now.
That's what I was wondering, are you gonna be able to test it in this heat where it's so hot?
Well, I mean, we still, we have more evaporation, certainly, but I think that our biggest challenge is making sure we have a pond sufficiently full that DEQ will accept the test, because, you know, if it's, if it's only this full, but, you know, the pond would be filled to here, and then DEQ says, well, you didn't test this upper part, one of the leaks in that part, didn't have water in it, you know, didn't have, wasn't exposed to water. So, so we'll have to, I have to get, call a guy and come down and look at it, and we'll, we'll have to find the best time to do the testing. And then, anyway, let's, let's divert all the water into water and see if we can.
End that one there.
Yeah, but it's, it's the north. Which one's one?
Huh?
Which one's one?
Your shop.
I, I think that it's the north one there. We failed, right?
That's what I was thinking, it was the north one.
Yeah.
The north one is the one we did first.
Yeah, and that's the one that failed.
The second one we did though?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so let's put the water in the north one.
Okay.
That's the one I was calling pond one, is that north?
How long will that take to fill up, you know?
To fill it up? I don't think it will this year.
Huh?
It won't this year. To fill it clear up? I'd have to sit and pump water into it. With their evaporation, we'd go down all summer long, that's the main thing that happens during this two hour ponds. It only is during the wintertime that it stays stagnant and slowly gains, you know, and. But we have, the surface retention of the pond evaporates a lot. I can try it, but, like I said, without turning the pumps on and dumping a bunch of water into it and gaining a bunch into it out of the city pump, it's not gonna, it'll hold, it'll, it may hold steady or slightly inclined, but it would take forever to summer to fill it up.
Well, we don't want to pump a bunch of water into it, do we?
Not really.
All we'll have to, all we'll have to do is, we'll just have to work with DEQ about when the pond is full or not, because, and when they, when they will accept, you know, how full or how empty they'll accept it, or allow it and still accept our test, so we're gonna have to just talk to DEQ about, you know, here's where we're at, we can't, you know. But I don't want to alarm them and say, well, we can't fill the pond, because I, otherwise they're gonna, because they, you know, their reaction, well, that must be leaking. We can't fill it, so I'll have, so I'll have to explain to him, here's, and here it is July, here's our, I have to get the numbers from a guy that says, we're putting, you know, through the lift station, with the new flow meter, we're putting whatever, you know, eighty thousand gallons a day into it, but we're evaporating a hundred and two gallons, you know, thousand gallons.
They surely understand that.
They will, but I just, I just need to show them the numbers so that they're like, oh, okay. I don't want to jump to a conclusion, so it's better to just give them a little bit of data and information and say, okay, here's where we're at, we're, you know, we have whatever, four point eight feet in the pond, but the full condition is six feet, so, are we okay to test at four point eight feet, or, you know, how full do you want it before we do the test? And hopefully they're reasonable about that.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I really don't want to fill it back up, because during the wintertime, we gain foot and a half or two feet, foot and a half of water during the wintertime in both the ponds. And if we get it up there now when it should be losing.
Then you'll have the capacity.
Then it puts us in the spring with that too much water in our ponds, especially if we're having wet air.
Yeah, well, uh, I guess if everything goes to the north pond.
We might, we might save them out.
And what we do, what I've done in other places, and I don't know, you know, you pump water from, so you don't put new water in, you pump water from.
There is one other possibility where we could go in and clean it all up and take a, a regular gas pump and go put it in right here and then pump water out of the north pond and put it into that pond.
Yeah, yeah, so your ponds are sitting right here now, so we pump water from two into one, so we do this, and we, so we fill one, that's probably what we're gonna have to do.
Yeah, we could, we could isolate it and then move pond water into it, and that way we could let it go back.
Do you understand why we don't want to put a bunch of water in?
Yeah, that's the capacity you gotta use to fill it, when there is no evaporation.
Yeah.
Rather than the following winter. So anyways, we'll have to, we'll probably have to put water from two into one.
We can do that.
You got a pump for that?
I do.
Okay. I got a pump there too, so.
Yeah, you have a pump too.
Pretty good sized pump, four inch pump or something?
Gas pump, fifty thousand gallons in it, or five thousand, fifty thousand gallons an hour, maybe.
Yeah.
I don't know what my.
Anyway, well, given, given that, that's what we'll plan on, we'll put some, we'll move water from one to the other, I'll just have to get a guy and figure out, you know, when the water timing is.
That way it works good, because then I can be cleaning and clean that whole box and make sure that holes work good so that the isolation molds would work out, absolutely.
Okay, so we're, everybody's on board the same thing then, right? Wonkajokis, that all you got?
Yep, that's all I got.
Did you folks have something?
Um, yeah, we're neighbors with Jason and Brittany, we were just kind of, we were wanting to question the, the rules, and based off on. Um, yeah, I think we're neighbors with Jason and Brittany. We were just kind of, we were wanting to question the, the rules, uh, in Beesaw Pond Roosters.
Roosters.
We've got.
We've got some friendly roosters.
I don't know how many roosters, but they have them in the back of their properties, the guy right, right next to the canal leaving Beesaw.
Zack, Zack.
And it echoes off my house and keeps my kids awake. It crowns.
I can attest. I've heard it. At first I was like, I don't hear that, and then, oh yes, and ever since then.
I'm tired, I'm tired of it, yeah.
Yeah. Or, and I, and he's definitely got more of one, because I've heard it go sound continuously and, yeah. I don't hear it here, it's just.
Yeah, I don't know if there's any.
I don't know what our rules are.
Beesaw covenants or whatever prevent that. I don't know why you have a rooster in a city limit, but, yeah.
I don't know. I don't think you have anything.
We don't?
I don't think so. Trying to think of that stream.
Is that some sort of like disturbance, like quiet time? See it's going this and this?
But then you fall, so if you don't have it, then you fall state law and county law.
Do you have any idea how many chickens you have?
I don't. I don't. It's, I don't know, at least two, three roosters.
Who's that? Zack?
Yeah.
I don't think he's got many. What do you think? They're all roosters?
Obviously roosters, you can hear them, yeah.
Yeah, they're.
I think he's got a few hands, but I don't think he's got that many. He's lost so many of his cucks the last little while he's been biking with them.
So you folks live across the street?
No, we live.
Behind us.
Across the field, so, and it's just, it's in the very back of this property, so our house is the first thing it hits, and it's.
Yeah, that, his chicken fence is right, it hits the fence.
Behind me.
Yep, yep.
Out my back door.
So I live in Jim's.
They guard his old house.
North of you.
They live, yes, north of me.
Right, Jim's old place. Yeah, it's right across the side, empty pasture.
I think we're sheltered because we have some trees and we have the other house right there, but I had my window open the other night and I was wide awake and I'm like, holy Hannibal, yes. Yeah, I can't imagine what they can hear.
It's loud.
It's so loud.
Well, look at that. They're as far away as you are, aren't they?
Yeah, but they're down like north from us and there's no trees right there. It's all open field, because the people next to us, they plant a grass and it's all open fields and it goes right to Zack's backyard.
Well, we have to keep our windows open because we don't have A C, so that's another thing, but if we could keep our windows shut, it would probably not be bad, but the fact that we have to keep our windows open, cooler house often, I.
They're, they're impressive. If there's some sort of crow competition, he should, he should put them in it.
So where exactly do you live? So Brittany's here on the corner.
Next house to him.
Next house.
The white brick, the white brick house.
So right behind me. So if you're at the corner of my house, they're just the ones.
Okay.
Before you get to me.
Do you guys want a rabbit, or a chicken ordinance?
Rabbit, where's that?
Sorry. Anyway, cause, you know, I haven't spent a year and a half debating theirs and finding a good a chicken ordinance, and their big hangup was chickens are large, and I'm always like, chickens don't go large.
I know.
Chickens are large, become inches.
I know we did a number limit at one time, but I don't think we did anything else.
This is funny.
And chickens are one thing.
Well, especially with the roosters.
The rooster, that's.
Yeah, I don't understand them.
Yeah.
Hey, this is, I gotta tell you this, I think this is funny.
You wouldn't think it was funny if you rubbed up four in the morning.
Say, I'll call you four in the morning and find out what's wrong.
Roosters across the street in Jim's old place.
Do they crow?
Yeah.
At four in the morning?
Well, I don't know about that.
Sometimes, four o'clock.
Sometimes.
That's when the sun starts rising.
I think it does before and I'm like, what the heck?
If they see a flash of headlights, they're going.
They're going, yeah.
That's, that's, that's the main reason I kill off all my roosters early in the season and then new ones come up and replace them. By fall, then they're back up making good morning.
Anyway, the reason I was laughing, it wasn't too long ago that Zack was in here and he, he made us pass a, a jake brake law.
Oh.
Cause the trucks throwing their jake brakes on, and that's what he was complaining about.
Which why is he complaining?
Now, you guys are in here, you're complaining about your roosters.
He can't do any hiding.
Oh, so.
I, I get the humor now. I get the humor now. I didn't at first.
The jake brakes kinda have a.
A vibration, maybe? That's why I wondered if it was like waking his kids or something.
That, and both are new, they just really react to the noises that they're, what's kid acting up for, you know?
Yeah.
It's much, much like my kids.
So isn't it, are you telling me that these roosters are doing this? Is it a big chance to talk to them?
Uh, yeah, I have, but it's, yeah, it's difficult.
It's a language we're using.
Yeah, yeah.
So, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Do you guys have a control on your dog now?
Uh, which dog?
Well, that youngest one was running wild in the neighborhood.
Yeah, we got him.
Okay.
Yep.
I haven't seen it lately.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know, what can, I've never, I don't know anything about this, what?
Uh, we argued with Shane when he goes over like that and it's, nobody's ever figured out what to do about chickens or something. That's why I know falls passes ordinance, you can't have roosters. Um.
All of them that are passed.
That's the natural function of a rooster.
Who went over by Kelly Hill? Cause she called me complaining about roosters.
Who?
Kelly Hill, Kelly Robinson, is that Shane's roosters?
Robinson, that's Shane's roosters, they're gone.
They're gone?
Yeah.
Yeah, she called me about them a while back and I'm like, she was gonna come in, but apparently she never did, so I don't know. I don't, I didn't know what the rooster.
So is that what we need to do here?
You got a, you got a rooster problem, you gotta pass an ordinance. You know, and they all have limits, you can have chickens, you know, so many of them per, you know, so many square foot of a lot, and, you know, so they all have a little bit of detail there and, and no roosters.
Passing, I think, boxes to the amount, right?
Yeah, I don't remember if you had.
Something to consider is breed as well, because some breed of roosters don't grow. They're very quiet.
Why they're not known as local.
And others are just, well, rock starters.
Throw them in.
That's what those roosters are, we must have.
I don't know, I've been asking.
Let me, uh, bring the ones like that Aberdeen passed. You know, that'd be, you know, something that you guys might wanna consider. I'll bring that up to you.
Have you tried to talk to him?
What's that?
Have you talked to him, Shane?
Uh, Zack, I, I have before, I mean, there's that barrier of all the, right, yeah.
I talked about him. I'll go say something to him.
Yeah.
Yeah, did, when you tried to talk to him, did he say anything about trying to keep him quiet?
No, no, I, like I said, I didn't get that far.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause that, I'm gonna be honest, I don't care, but they annoy the crap out of me.
If you've got multiple roosters that compete.
Yes.
But if one got one, he crowns a little bit now and then to announce his thing, but.
Yes, the dogs that bark at.
I feel bad for you because I can hear that dog and they said the same thing to that dog.
So like all night long.
What dog, yeah?
I don't know, it's two neighbors that have dogs. One of them is.
Kit?
Kids?
Yes, and then the other one.
Have you seen any more ordinance about the noise on the dogs?
Yeah, my kids were coming home from grandma's and drove by and saw him.
I mean.
And there was with, Kit and Jerry's dogs were competing with each other, so.
He stepped out and they're barking at you, it's like, in my own yard, why are you barking at me? I'm near you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I just hadn't known.
That tries to stem it down. I threw a stick at it, you know what it did? Took the stick and went home. I went, well, I guess I can work at it. I mean, it did, but.
I don't, I don't know what we're gonna do with Kit. He's, uh, well, he was throwing water to guys and stealing water, cause we've got his water shitting off, and he's supposed to have.
Yeah, I wouldn't get too much of that conversation to get member names.
Don't, they take each other in the.
Anyway. There's a lot of problems on that corner.
Pardon me?
You're across the street, yeah. Okay, so.
I'll bring you, I'll bring you what Aberdeen and Blackwood has done.
That'd be great, thank you.
And you guys can look at it and see what you like and what you don't like. That'd be give you a good starting point.
Can we just approve theirs?
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, I mean, no, seriously, yeah, because that's obviously, that's where we start from, is we, okay, this is what they did.
Okay.
You don't reinvent the wheel, and then, uh, you know, but I'll change it to where, you know, applies to you guys. But you may, but until you read it, you may like it all, you may not, but that's, you know, you can go through it and see what you want.
I can't remember what, there's, uh, I'm on a, on a homestating, uh, YouTube forum, and some were talking about, you know, they're switching their roosters to a certain breed that is quieter because it bothers them too. And so there's different breeds that are quiet and you don't want to exclude an option for people to go with a quieter breed.
Well, the other one is the storm scum, it's out, they just ain't no roosters. Obviously, if it's not crowing, nobody's gonna know.
No.
Or if it's crow, crowing.
The company's going in and sex checking these chickens.
The other one is eggs are a lot more nutritious and better for you if they're fertilized than if they're non-fertilized. Non-fertilized eggs almost have a toxic quality compared to a fertilized egg. So you don't wanna take away that option for a person.
Well, like I said, you just don't want them crowing.
And best of deal.
Yeah, I think there's no roosters. Actually, in, I mean, the ones I've dealt with, they're always just no roosters, but like I said, if it's not making noise, nobody's gonna know.
Yeah. And guys, you go talk to him, he might.
I go talk to him. Zack responds to me really good.
Sounds like a good option, so.
Okay, I missed one deal on the agenda. The budget.
Thanks for hiring.
You betcha, thank you.
So what other numbers written down beside our carry is, except for the city?
That's just the guesstimation, that's the new budget.
Oh, okay, okay.
And that's comparing to last year, fiscal year.
So should we talk about the tax levy that we, they presented to us? When did we have to have it done by carry, do you remember?
Well, so your L2s have to be done by September something, or September fifth or tenth or somewhere around.
But we always take the three percent.
Yeah, I didn't know if we needed to vote on that or, no, okay.
But, yeah, so what you're, what you do need to vote on is the tentative budget, because then it has to be published for a public carrying. So you will, you know, and this can be adjusted down, you cannot adjust up, um, once you get to that public carrying stage, but so you would wanna, so you gotta, you do need to approve the tentative budget to keep the process going.
Okay. And this reflects there? I'm, I'm totally in the dark when it comes to the levy and all this.
I believe that's, which I still have to work with.
Yeah, so, so you.
That card, pan that card on it, cause I still don't fully understand it myself.
Basically you back into the levy rate?
Right.
Right.
What I'm saying is, is does our budget right here reflect the increase basically?
Now, I kept answering that, I think you probably did.
Yeah, cause I do the same, around the same amount, cause it's around the same amount every year.
Okay, so.
So.
Should we take the number and just increase it three percent?
Yeah, and I think she, I think she has. So your total revenue with the one twenty-nine is the one thirty-five, the three percent?
Okay, sorry, I was looking at just one line item, so I apologize. Okay.
So anyway, but yeah, so you take that, once you get your total revenue established, then the L2 gives the assessments, which now will weigh up, then the levy rate's gonna go way down because you're just backing into that number. But the state tax commission just barely got the L2 stuff. I don't know why it takes them so long every year, they're always, you think after this many years of property taxes, they would do it here.
Do we need to increase our street maintenance?
Yes.
Well, it's a bit, yeah.
What's that?
Yeah, fourteen and a twenty.
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't read that one. I'll call it there. Okay.
Are you gonna have to, uh, postage?
We haven't done anything on our streets for what, three years, two years?
Uh.
Well.
Well, we have, we have spent, put on two years.
Well, I did, I did a little bit, yeah.
We spent the money elsewhere. I think that's two years ago.
Yeah.
Last year we used it up there, this year we use it around the pumps.
I wrote this the other day and I'm like.
What?
I wrote this in a picture.
I.
Yeah.
The pumps right now?
No, my brother.
Oh, your brother? I haven't got one for him.
No, so it's on you, please, stand close. I'll just keep driving around, I don't care. I have other ways to move.
I, I do have a little blast, so I just haven't, when I'm gonna work on it.
There was a part where it was pretty nice.
Yeah, yeah, gravel, because the road, it's all breaking away.
It's all coming away.
So it would be nice if we can get an infrastructure grant.
Yeah, I was gonna.
For roads and stuff.
Yeah, we do need to try to get that, but we, there was that gentleman that came in and talked to us about the grants. I can't remember if we ever did anything like that.
And we were thinking about using him for a pump, right? Was it the one that we were like, oh, we should have used that?
We wanted, we had several things we could have used before, and I can't remember whatever.
I was waiting to hear from you guys, you were supposed to email me something.
Yeah, I remember that.
And I.
Yeah, I remembered it once.
That doesn't happen with that.
Okay. I don't know if you missed our window or not. Just out of curiosity, so the police are supposed to come in, um, come through Beesaw, correct? Is that at least once in a while?
I think so, yeah.
What's that?
The police are supposed to come through Beesaw once in a while.
Yeah, right.
This is not one once.
I see them. Very often.
That cat's going right, like, rooster.
Yeah, they've admitted they look like us, just three of them, and made that little chat with them.
Is that cause we have a little primary?
Then they think we have.
Sewer fund extension, what way up in? What was it?
It's on six and out seven five.
Huh?
It's on six and out seven five.
That was twenty-seven last year, was it? Let me get new cookups. Where does that money go?
The water savings?
The water goes worth a thousand dollars for sewer.
I was just putting in your water, I guess I didn't divide that out, I didn't even think about that.
You're supposed to buy that.
Yeah, I didn't even.
So your sewer hookups for your sewer water?
Right. Just leave it in the water. Well, I could have had a lot of them happen.
What's that sign?
Oh, that was the last time we had it, those. Jensen's?
Oh, we'll see. Before that, like the chips about.
What's your water address? Yeah, they should be, this is.
I really know that now, in my brain, that you say it, but I just couldn't.
I'm just curious, if I, did you do a certain percentage across the board for increases or?
Is, I did it in June, so that's the ninth month of the fiscal year. So I take that amount for the year to date and I divide it by nine, then I times it by twelve. And that gives me the number that I get.
Okay, and so basal must be on the calendar year?
We're on the fiscal.
Or are we on the federal?
October one to September three.
So the federal.
Is that federal, cause the state's July five, yeah.
Yeah, feds do it from October to September, okay.
So that's how I figure those numbers. And I have to adjust them a little bit on the bottom.
Jared, are we allowed? To take our money that we got left over on the sewer project to make the sewer payment?
I believe so.
You can do that?
Exactly, whatever left over is gonna be in your capital side, so I think you can. You might want to check with your grant agency just to make sure, but.
Yeah.
Chick will do.
You're great, you gotta be careful when it comes to.
Yeah, you'd want to call in your grant, just to make sure they know it's on stream there.
Do they know you have that leftover funds?
Oh, yeah, I knew, yeah, but it's just sitting there, not doing anything.
Okay, but what did you propose you were gonna do with that money?
Well, I was just asking the question is if, if you could use that money to make our sewer payment.
Yeah, you need to contact your grant agency, cause that money's protected for the grant. I mean, if you spend it and it's not what the grant said you can, you can get in a lot of trouble. So contact your grant agency and ask.
So is that V D Q or is that?
Was it V Q or the C C O?
Oh, I can get hold of the C C O.
Yeah, just verify with your grant agency, because yeah.
Okay, I didn't know if we had to contact the people who gave us the grant or this.
Yeah, probably, you can get hold of C C O and we'll get you just in a response.
Okay.
Can you get a hold of them, mind down, please?
Yeah, those always have these strings and the fine print and.
Yeah, when you get grants, they, they really try to make you stick to what you said you were gonna spend the money on.
They said that we could use it on anything that was sewer related.
That's my recollection, like I said, it's worth the phone call.
Yeah, you should always just double check, because while you're considering that sewer related, they may not. They may, I mean, it depends on how you lay out your proposal, how you said you were gonna spend the money, what the money was allocated for. There's a whole thing, you don't want to mess with grants.
They could turn around and say, that's not what you said you were gonna spend it on.
And then you could be disqualified from ever receiving another grant. There's just, the grant, it's easier to call and ask, you don't want to spend it and then get in trouble.
Yeah, they're super big.
Well, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Just as an example, so Blackwood still having to deal with the, uh, the feds on the park and recreational grants, because of that swimming pool. They got that grant in nineteen sixty nine. Because they couldn't afford to maintain the school and they're now they're almost called conversion status, because they turned this pool back to the school.
Yeah.
And said, we're washing our hands of it. And so anyway, but it's not a, not a huge issue, other than if they weren't gonna be able to do another park or something, they're not eligible.
Maybe they should have put that into the information before we all voted.
It was out there.
Wasn't out there.
But it was, I mean, like I say, most people won't track that. But, you know, yeah, that's, that's a fifty year old string.
That's interesting.
Laura, you might know the answer to this. Can we, if we, if we decide to do another lagoon, can we take some of that money that we got on the sewer grant?
You should be able to, cause that sewer, that's directly sewer related.
Yeah, that's what I was.
It's kind of gonna depend, again, it goes back to what your grant guidelines were and what you, what did you get the grant money for?
For our sewer project.
So, but tell me more about the sewer, was that to?
The pipes.
The pipes? And how, how much detail did you put into your scope of work to say, we're just gonna use it on the pipes?
They might not let you where that wasn't existing beforehand, but they might say, oh, it was just.
Well, it depends on how you worded your proposal.
And they're gonna have some carryout, and again, even on that, you're gonna call and ask, but, um, I would be more inclined, almost for sure, that would be fine. Because they're gonna have some catchall language in the grants for, you know, sewer purchase. Because, you know, a lot of times you get that grant and then if there's, you've been able to save money from what the engineers have estimated. Then obviously you can expand, you know, the scope, because you've got this savings. And that's where it's directly sewer related, I think Laura's right, that that would be probably okay, but again, you can still, I'll contact you.
Yeah, exactly, because I'm, I'm like ninety nine percent sure you're gonna be just fine, cause that is definitely sewer related. And again, it comes back to how strictly you wrote your grant and what the guidelines came out to say that you could get awarded when you got the grant. I suspect you can use it, I'm with Garrett.
Would you ask?
I got it written down.
Would you ask them also?
Yeah.
About?
I got it written down.
Another.
Oh, another one?
Yeah, if we.
Another lagoon, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got it.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay. Let me share that, I guess. You can add more to that.
Makes up for my not separating the sewer and water.
Well, any more questions about the? Proposed? Budget? Do we need to approve that?
Yeah, you do, I'm actually gonna approve the tentative budget.
We haven't fallen short anywhere, hopefully.
The other thing to keep in mind is if some money came up during the year, through the ninety dollars to publish, you can reopen and change it. So it's, so your risk is ninety bucks, if there's a number in here that happens to just be way off or whatever reason. Your published notice, once you have your public hearing, you reopen it and then change it.
Okay.
So it's, so it's a small risk.
Oh, that's, oh, okay, that's good.
Just to give a comfort level, yeah, you can always open the budget.
That does make me feel better.
You know, so like Blackwood will save up everything and open the budget in September and just fix it all after they've gone through their audit and stuff. You know, but they've got a lot more going on, obviously than you guys do.
Right.
But yeah, so you would just wait and worst case scenario, September twenty three, you open your budget and they change some things. So, yeah, just so you, not a huge risk.
I don't have to speak at ease, that's been to Garrett. I'm rushing that we pass the tentative budget for the fiscal year twenty two, twenty three.
Are you saying it?
All in favor? Good.
When is our audit?
We should be finalizing last year's soon. If it's not already done, we're just gonna have to come again. Isn't like, yeah.
Okay, you can turn the cameras off?
Well, we have to adjourn.
Huh?